Looks like we're there, so we'll call the meeting to order. Everybody's here tonight, including our student members. And so, any additions to the agenda?
There are none.
Just on the side, I absolutely love that when there's more additional agenda. I probably said that almost every time.
I love it more than you.
Yeah, it seems more organized. So, we need approval of the agenda.
So, move.
I have a motion from Rick, a second from Cheryl. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say no? Carried. Do we have anybody here for public comment?
I have no requests.
Okay. And then, we are now on the consent agenda. And so, minutes, pretty straightforward. Treasurers report, Cheryl.
I had a chance to go look at the bills and there was nothing out of the ordinary. Everything been pre-approved. It was pretty much up to date. We've had some repairs that have been done, some painting, and I just see the notes on those and it's just going great.
Okay. Then we have the personnel items. Matt?
Yeah, I can run through these. ECFE hours, these are current ECFE employees. Matt has just put together what their second semester hours will be. So, all of those four, I would recommend approval. Melissa Hubert will be a paraprofessional at the elementary school. Item three, I would ask that whoever makes the motion approve this without item three. Dusty Queen actually notified the district office today that she had a different employment offer that she was gonna accept, so she is no longer going to accept our offer. And then Alexis Skugland would be the recommended hire for our third section of second grade. Questions at all on the personnel items?
If there's no discussion or questions, move or ask for a motion to accept the consent agenda excluding C3. Item three of C.
Second.
A motion by Thomas, a second by Jacob. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say no? Carried. Communication items. Matt, we're back to you.
I just have a couple of them. So, today was the pre-bid meeting for the construction project. We met in this room at 3:00 with the contractors that were interested in bidding on any portion of the work that will go out for advertisement tomorrow. And went through this building, had about a 20-minute conversation with them about the project, so they understood kind of what we're trying to accomplish. And then, the last 30 minutes or so of the meeting was actually a site walkthrough. We took a look in all of the CTE spaces that would be remodeled. And then, we also went out to the north side of the building by the auditorium, take a look at kind of the backside of the building where the auto shop will go and so they can see where that community center will kind of be placed and parking lot and how it all will get pulled together. After that, we went over to the elementary school and had the pre-bid meeting for the boiler replacement work. That is part of the facility project as well. Again, that was a much shorter meeting, probably five or 10 minutes just talking about the scope of work. And then, we just went to the boiler room and they were busy taking some extra pictures and other things as well. Personally, I was hoping that there were a few more contractors there than what we had, but we have some contractors who are obviously interested in the work and so now it's kind of a waiting game. They have bids are due February 11th at 2:30. That's when we will have the bid opening. From there, there's nothing that will be awarded on that day or anything, but the bid opening will happen on February 11th. And then UNESCO will be taking those bids back and just going through them to make sure they're qualified bids from qualified contractors. And then, they will be putting together a recommendation as far as what bids they would suggest the board approve. The calendar right now has that as an action item or a business item for the Board of Education at the February 25th business meeting is when the final contract and those bids would be approved. Questions at all on the pre-bid stuff?
Any general comments, anything like that, or?
No, I mean, there were some technical questions that they were looking for a little more specification. UNESCO really deals with those, I don't.
I'm just curious what their reaction was to the boilers or anything like that.
I think all of the contractors have, you know, they've seen the boilers from 1961 and 1958. And yeah, it's not uncommon to be replacing them, so.
We will get a copy ahead of time of UNESCO's reports.
Yeah, so it'll come out with the February 25th agenda, just like any of the regular agendas do. And then, you'll also have in that, you'll have a worksheet or a spreadsheet that essentially will be a summary of all the open bids that were open on the 11th.
So, do you open the bids with UNESCO? Is that how that works?
Yeah.
And then, I'm assuming we have a series of bids. They've broken this down, so we're not just dealing with one contractor, correct?
Yeah, so there's four packages. There's a general trades, an electrical, a mechanical, I'm forgetting one. It's escaping me, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
And then, there's a fifth one that will be the testing and commissioning of the final equipment as well that'll be awarded at a later date. But yeah, so there's.
There were several here from each of those, or?
There were multiple from each of them. Like I said, I was hoping there would have been a few more, but.
So, did UNESCO say that anybody else will step in and bid even if they weren't here?
No, I did not. I didn't ask that question and.
I'd just be curious. You know, a lot of these guys have, this is bidding time of the year and so it's not that they, maybe they, there may be some that weren't here.
Sure.
It'd just be interesting, they would know if we have more bidders.
Right.
Good.
The other one that I have is the school board evaluation. That is well on the way, so if you, I believe, last time I had conversation with Gail from MSBA, we were missing one survey. I have no idea how to tell who that is though, so if you haven't done your survey, please take care of that. And then, finally, I just want to update on the armory building as well. So, I've made what I feel are some very positive steps forward with the armory. I do have a verbal from the representatives of the Federal Department of Education about demolishing the armory buildings. They are, they understand precisely what the district is wanting and needs to proceed with. We are also going to pursue a change of use request. That request has been sent and I have been assured that they are going to work diligently on their end to get that change of use processed. My goal and my hope is that we will keep the existing deed in place, that they will approve the change of use. The change of use would still have that property being used 100% for public benefit and so there would be no need to do anything different with the deed. The deed would remain in effect effective of February of 2012 and it would last until February of 2042 and then the deed would expire and it would be our property. And so, I don't, if all of that plays out, it means that the district doesn't have to worry about any fees or anything associated with having to pay a fee in order to make those changes that we're proposing. Like I said, my conversations were very positive and they understand why it is we're trying to accomplish what we are and they are supportive. They just have a process that they need to follow and so we're gonna get that going.
The process, what are they thinking for a timeline? Does it match up with when we would need to have?
Yeah, so what I'm hoping is that we would have some definitive decision by them by March 1 is what I'm hoping. So, if they have here the month of February to run their process and then March 1, we would be able to get something back. I have just briefly touched base a little bit with UNESCO as far as some assistance with the asbestos abatement that would have to happen out of that building before it could be demolished and then also working with them to identify some contractors that are into that line of work and could haul that building away, so. So, it's good news. We'll see where it goes from here.
Good.
Those are the three items I have.
Okay, then committee reports. We have the MSBA Leadership Conference. This is time that we want everybody just to kind of mention. Is that what you'd like to do at this meeting? Or would you like to kind of talk about what you did at the next meeting when we have just plain discussion?
I'm open to whatever the board would like. If the board wants, we can certainly put the MSBA Leadership Conference on the work session in February. And if there's things that we want to talk about regarding that, that's perfectly fine with me. If you guys have things that you want to discuss right now, it's, I'm open.
The only reason that we ever started, when I got on the board and a bunch of us got on the board, we would go down to that conference and come back and might as well not gone. Well, we've just spent some taxpayers' money, right?
We never shared.
So, we just started kind of sharing about it. Very casual, a little bit about what you went, quick summary of where you might have gone to different things or what you might have talked to. It was a quick and short, it's up to you, we can do it now or I kind of thought maybe we would do it the first meeting of February.
That's fine.
Because it's more casual conversation and.
I agree.
Doesn't have to be at a formal board meeting, is that okay?
Yep.
Yet, the public can hear what we were up to. We certainly don't want anybody in the system to think we were out doing something that wasn't in favor of the school. And then, student representatives. Neither of you have?
I have a couple of things. So, we started our senior privileges today, so we can now leave for lunch, which is nice, except I will probably waste a lot of money because of that. But that's besides the point. And then, we had our NHS banquet on Sunday and I believe we inducted 23 new members. So, now we have like 53 roughly members, so that was a success. That's all I have.
Good.
We're just getting ready for Sweet Fest.
Okay.
Just out of curiosity, do you have an idea like, how many seniors actually leave campus? I know it's expensive.
I'm guessing.
So, I mean, I don't, all again do leave.
Yeah.
Some do, some don't?
I think probably right away, there will be a lot more because you think like, oh, cool, you know, we get to leave, but then, once you realize that, wow, I just spent a lot of money this week when I could have ate at school for much less. Less probably will, but, and then also I know like some kids are leaving because they have an online class or something else and they're just more so like going home too. So, I guess I don't know.
Are they kind of spreading out, so they're not all going to the same spot and overwhelming one business?
I don't really know. I mean, I guess I left today and I didn't see anyone, so.
Okay.
I don't know and I.
Just curious.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Okay. Then, we don't have anything for old business, new business. We have policy first readings on three policies, 524, 25, 524, or is that just, is the first one just one or is 524.1 a different one?
There are two.
Okay. And then, 526.
Policy committee, do you want me to review this? Do you guys want to review this? How would you, how would you like to do this? Don't all speak at once.
You can jump in some on policy 524. The recommended changes, we, what was recommended will strike out and the other addition is to add that policy online. It currently isn't. Policy 524.1, the social media policy, and that one actually I didn't put a note on there, I think it was.
So, the social media policy is the one right now that isn't online, so we're gonna get that online.
Right. Combine those notes.
The reason for the numbering is I want 520, I want the social media policy linked to the Internet Acceptable Use and Safety. They are very much intertwined, they are very much connected. The danger in taking and putting 525 as our social media policy, when MSBA comes out with something and numbers at 525, then we have a little bit of a problem. So, we're calling it 524.1. So, we would just change the numbering on it and then we would publish it online. And then, I would recommend that the board attach the same review cycle as 524 Internet Acceptable Use to link that to the social media policy. So, 524 is a policy that the board reviews annually. I would recommend that the social media policy be reviewed annually. It's something that will continue to evolve and change very quickly and so it would make sense to do that. And then Maggie, you want to go on the hazing policy?
Sure. There were a lot of additions to this, but it's basically to bring it up to what MSBA recommends and it's really addressing the retaliation component of it, so we're just making it match what MSBA is recommending.
Doesn't that kind of follow the bullying policy?
Yes.
Almost exactly?
We talked about that, they're very similar.
Very similar. There were just a lot of changes in that one I'm scrolling through. And then, the next policy, 529, there were no recommended changes to that policy. And 531, the pledge allegiance policy, again, no recommended changes to that policy.
So, in short then, what we would be doing here tonight is we would be approving the first reading and since we are making changes to policy 524, 524.1, and 526, those are the policies that we would be posting and be accepting any comments or feedback on. Next business meeting, the board would act on a second reading and formally approving those changes.
So, we're looking for a motion to approve the first reading of policy 525, 524, 524.1, 526 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Cheryl, seconded by Jacob. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say no? Carried. Then we move to budget reduction.
Bruce, were there other committee reports that we should, like I had a West Central Ed meeting?
Okay.
Do we report out on those or?
No, we should. I don't know that we have a good method to track all of them.
It's okay, we can go back.
Anyway, you can go back.
Yeah.
So, the West Central Ed meeting was mostly the organizational meeting, but it was interesting because West Central Ed is going through a strategic planning process and so they met with the four districts and I believe they said they had about seven to 11 representatives from each district. They met with them individually and asked kind of where, you know, where priorities were, so they're trying to assess where their focus should be. And the top priorities were assistance with behavioral health, second, addressing 504 coordination, homelessness, dyslexia, and gifted and talented students, and then also trainings. And there was definitely a common theme of more collaboration between the districts with professional development and just sharing of like knowledge resources. Some of the other top areas discussed were again, staff sharing and help with trainings, some more secretarial support, para-training. And then, from the business manager, their input was working together to have, again, more training opportunities specifically to like MAR so that they're consistent with coding. So, I didn't realize that we were consistent, but it just to make sure that everything is done the same for efficiency's sake. They are taking a look at Alexandria who has a board certified behavioral analyst and seeing like what that would, what the impacts are and what that would take potentially looking at that for West Central Ed. Another thing is what we were talking about, kind of just as a general conversation, not necessarily based off of what the districts reported back, but the conversation in the room was like where is that gap between the district and a kid then moving to like the ALC? And how do we, you don't even, there's, it just felt like there was not necessarily a clear pipeline or pathway through there. And so, just starting some of those conversations on, on how do we assess that. Mel Rose brought forward some intervention program. Now, this isn't necessarily for the gap part, but they were talking about, and I believe, Matt, you said we do have this room or we are looking at it, if they call it what I need, a win room. But it's based specifically for behavioral, like in their elementary school and so they have like pairs in there, they have school counselors, not all at the same time, but it's a specialized room. And it's really mediation, so there's less incidents in the classroom and they can bring kids to rooms that are prepared for those situations. And then, like in a secondary school, those rooms will be set up for academic and for behavioral at the same time. So, they're just trying to, people are coming forward with just different ideas of trying to help figure out some of these situations, how to draw them. So, yeah, it's kind of the beginning of a strategic plan. It's not even decided what that strategic plan will look like, but right now, it's kind of been information gathering points. What do the four districts need? How do we collaborate? What makes sense and what are the priorities?
Good.
Did you have that meeting since the last, our last meeting? Because didn't you say that somebody was gonna maybe come and speak here about more like what they do and?
Yes, they're open to that. For what we would do.
Executive Director of West Central Ed.
Maybe I did refer him last year too.
He's open to it.
I just don't, it sounded a little bit not.
I think that was when we were talking about ideas for bringing people in, that their one.
Yeah. Yeah, because I still, even with all that explanation, I'm not really sure what all their scope is.
And that's part of the challenge and why, like I need to do a better job sitting in that board, making sure I'm relaying information back.
No, I, I.
But I think.
You give, you give it thorough information. I still, I think I'm just the last one, I'm like.
You're not, you're not alone. I think a lot of the districts are feeling that way, that they don't know.
I mean, this, as far as I know, didn't look like this when I was in school, so, you know, we didn't have any sort of rooms like that or anything. Students that needed any extra or special help were isolated, so I really don't know what it looks like to integrate it or to have a whole to work with it.
And I said, it's not, students don't feel, how do I say the word? Like, kids are coming in and out of classrooms all the time, so it's not like certain students feel targeted if they're taken out of the classroom because it's different than it was.
Yep.
You know, it's very, very common for students to be moving in and out, because that was one of my concerns, do students feel, you know, if you were taking them into different classrooms, how does that look and feel? And there was, it didn't seem to be any issue at all.
When I was a kid, it wasn't that way. I was one of them. My buddies gave me such a bad time every time I had to get up and walk out. What I like about the, what you're talking about is the coordination. So often, we have separate groups doing separate things, but it's not coordinated, so it doesn't flow. And when you're talking about coordinating the kids that may be using those surfaces and all that, I think that is just important, that we make it flow very nice and very smooth.
Or even just using the same language.
Yeah.
Same terms for everything.
Yep, yep.
One other thing I forgot to mention that is, they talked about that, ed districts don't have their own diploma, so the diplomas still come from the district and so that's something that they're looking at because they're accountable for graduation rates, but they're, is that a fair way to say it? They're not actually handing them. So, they're looking at what would it look like if you had a diploma from West Central Ed versus the districts. It is a little bit strange that their accountability, that they're accountable for those graduation rates, but have no.
Well, we're trying to make it smooth, so you don't stand out there. Maybe nobody looks at those, but we would want to be very careful that they don't stand out because theirs didn't come from Paintsville School, you know, or a respective school would be my only thought there. You know, kind of coordinate on one, but then you kind of separate.
Could go the other way too though, because I know I graduated with, well, bigger class than we usually have, but still, there was several names I graduated with. I'm like, I have no idea who those people are, I've never seen them before in my life.
Mm-hmm.
And it was because they were in different programs, but had to graduate through the main district, so it might have been an idea. I mean, that's up to them, but yeah.
At the same time though, we've had kids that went to those programs that ended up coming back.
Yeah. And so, like you said, it's completely different than when I was in school.
It's complicated.
I think, I mean, the goal is you want kids in the classroom. The goal is so that they're gaining the skillset and that's not for every student. But I think there's a, there's just a lot of question, not a lot of questions, it'll be that in a negative way, but how are we sending students there? Are we identifying early? Are there rights students there? Are, like, is there more capacity there? Are we holding on to students too long? I mean, just some of those, and Matt, you can probably speak to that better, but just like some bigger questions about what is that, what does that look like? Because does, what is the process that a student is here and then ends up going to West Central Ed? And, you know, it's through a referral and they do have a process for that, but I don't know, there's just some bigger, bigger questions on what could be, what direction do we want to go?
Well, we've had these presentations on student analysis in our own school. This just looks like it could be an extension of that through that organization. It makes, it just makes a lot of sense to me without knowing detail. If we can make it coordinated so it flows really smooth, I think it just would be better. Got any input on this one, Matt, or are you kind of covering it or? You don't have that.
We can move on.
I mean, we've had a lot of discussions.
Maybe we should close this.
It'll be really just.
I tend to overshare.
Yeah, I'm just interested to see where it goes. Personally, I am convinced that we have an opportunity lost that is going on and we need to, we need to do better. And I'm not just talking about Paintsville schools, I'm talking about the West Central Ed District as a whole and the four member districts that make up that entity. Yeah, we're, we need to do better is the underlying theme. And so, it's going to take some willingness to look at things through different lenses and a willingness of all the partners to come to the table and accept that what maybe all of us have in our mind for what is an educational system that worked for us isn't working for all kids. And so, that's, that's where the trouble becomes because it's, it's complex and you add dollars and cents to it, you add people that are gaining enrollment and people that are losing enrollment and it becomes competitive and it becomes all these things that it's not supposed to be. It's supposed to be what is the best thing for students. And unfortunately, there are so many other things that get in the way. We need to fix that, so that's the kindest way I can put it. Okay?
Okay. Any other discussion there? None, let's, we'll go back then down to B of new business, budget reduction resolution.
So, this is an annual resolution. I don't want the board to become alarmed with this. I am not in a position to be able to say, you know, what, what are the corrections that need to be made on the budget at this point. But in order for us, if we do have to reduce the budget, this is step one and we have to do this annual notice to get the process started. I am very hopeful. I think we are going to probably go through a spring here and I don't think the board's gonna really be entertaining budget reductions, but I want this.
That's in case.
Just to, just to be on the safe side and we will at least get a process started if we need to use it.
Okay, so we're looking for a resolution directing the administration to review and consider recommendations for adjustments, programs and positions and reasons therefore am I, there, I'm gonna back up. So, go down a little bit further. The motion for adoption of the foregoing resolution, no, introduce the following resolution. There we go. May I introduce the following, you need a motion to introduce the following resolution and moved its adoption and whereas the program and financial states of the school district may dictate that the school board considers adjustments, be resolved by the school board of the Independent School District number 71, 741 as follows. That the school board hereby directs the superintendent of the schools and administration to consider and review the budgets and programs in the school district for the 2020, 2021 school year and make appropriate recommendations for adjustments. So, we're looking for a motion. I'll make that motion. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
We have a second from Maggie. Any further discussion? We have a second from Maggie. Any further discussion? Being this is our resolution. I'm going to now go to.
Ashley?
Hi.
Jacob?
Aye.
Rick?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Yes.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Okay, and that's passed. So, then, we will move to facility project information. Matt, just roll back to you.
Yep, so I did touch base as far as the pre-bid meeting. The other thing with the facility project, I am hoping to get ironed down this week, are renderings with the final design and kind of the, the final pieces that the design committee, the work they did. I'm hoping to get those renderings at the end of this week, with the idea then, right now, I do have some time planned with the Paintsville Press next week to be able to sit down and, and talk about that facility project and have something in the, the local paper that would, would share kind of what this is going to look like when it's, when it's a finished product. Again, right now, the, the key to this is, the process is all right now laid out, so that we are going to utilize our existing business meetings. I know at one time, we had talked about if we needed special meetings or something to be able to approve or open bids or anything like that. That is not the case, but we will be just using the, the regular business meeting in February. So, other questions about the facility project, whether it be about the pre-bid or anything else that people have? I could certainly entertain those or take them back to find answers.
There's a point in time we discussed flooring in the, the new fieldhouse area. All that's still out there in the open and available for change, right? We certainly haven't maybe. Has there been any conversation on price within the budget, if making changes like that? Because clearly, if we go to a wood floor versus a, a rubber floor, and it's going to make some adjustments in, in price, how does that affect it, I guess?
Yep, so, there's a, the one thing that, that's at work with that is I do have one vendor that is wanting to be able to price that flooring off the national joint powers contract. So, I, I am working with that vendor to be able to get them the specs and everything, and they're gonna, gonna be able to, to provide that. I'll be interested to see if the, the prices that come off the contract are different than, than what comes in, in sealed bids, but we'll have some flexibility with, with how we approach it.
And then, the only thought in that I had is, is there any thoughts or ideas towards doing a dual type of floor in that fieldhouse? And I just think that in the sense that the maintenance on a wood floor is certainly going to be more significant over time to one aspect, but, you know, where we look at a walking track or something on the exterior perimeter of the space, maybe one type of flooring that's better suited for winter foot traffic going through the facility around the courts, whereas the court space itself, the better flooring for the athletes. The wood floor, just kind of, there's kicking ideas out that same direction of, of having some concept of both. Not so much even for a reduction in cost initially, but.
Yeah, so I, I actually had, had floated the idea to a vendor about, could you do a wood floor with the walking track around it, or a rubber floor or something? And yes, the answer to those is yes. You, you certainly can do that. The thing that gets a little tricky with that is.
Transition.
Is the, the transition components. And then, what can make it more tricky is if you have bleachers in the mix, because then the transitions become even more delicate. So, I, I have had conversations about it. It's not something, I guess, that I've asked anybody to, to give us estimates or anything on, but I think it's still something that certainly we could explore.
Yeah.
Expansion and contraction would be your, your biggest issue of all, as soon as you change however it's made, and, and that's an unforeseen. How do, how do you do that? Also, then you end up with a gap. Well, how do, how do you fix that gap?
Other questions at all with the facility budget?
I'm just excited, personally.
I think we are. I think the community's excited.
Mm-hmm.
Excellent. That's all I have for that.
Then we have lane, a lane change request.
So, we have one lane change. Yeah, it'd be my recommendation to approve the request that's in front of you for Amy Elson. She has submitted all of the appropriate paperwork and with the prior approvals. It'd be my recommendation to approve it. It's in the master agreement, so I really don't know what happens if you don't approve it.
Oh, my God.
I'm emotional.
Okay, motion from Thomas.
I'll second.
A second from Cheryl. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no? Carried. Out-of-state professional development action.
So, we talked about this at the work session. I would like the board to approve that we could attend this deeper learning conference. It is hosted at High Tech High in San Diego, California. It is the, when you talk about student-centered schools, when you talk about the direction in which we are trying to build capacity with meeting kids where they're at, personalized learning, and really, what, what I would call the educational environment of, of today, this is being able to see it in action. So, it would be my recommendation that this be approved. I would take this out of district staff development funds. I don't want employees that are listening or watching to be concerned about that. I still think we would have the capabilities to be able to meet PD needs that, that people put in for requests. We can still accommodate those things, but it would be my recommendation to approve this. Questions?
It was just the two, two people you would be sending?
Well, this is up to, to three employees, so right now, the, the question that I'm struggling with myself is I would like to go with the two principals, but I also am a little uneasy about having all three of us out for those days as well. And so, I'm still processing that. But it would be the two principals for sure, potentially myself. The district would be covering the conference fee and the lodging. The participants that go would be responsible for getting themselves there, whether they fly or drive, or, and their, their meals when they're out there.
It's not common to have a stipend or meals or anything with that.
It is common. I mean, there are districts that do it. Personally, I, I would like to keep it in the, with the guardrails that I've put on it, because those are the guardrails that I've put on for teachers that have attended national conventions. We had, I believe it was a music teacher who attended a national convention in Nashville, and the agreement that I had with them was they, we would pay the registration and the lodging. They would take care of getting themselves there and the meals that they have when they're there. I guess I would prefer we just be consistent with that if, if possible.
I think yes, and I think you should go, too, because I think, I mean, for one, this, I mean, this is like your main wheelhouse. This is, and it's good to have you just stay up on that stuff, but also you can do a lot of, I mean, if there's any emergency or any whatever, you can do. It's not like you're gone for two weeks or something.
So, the motion would be up to three. It's not locking three people in, but the motion would be to be willing to send up to three people to it.
We have a motion. We have a motion from Rick.
A second.
A second from Thomas. Any further discussion? I do want to say, the information that you sent on it is exactly what you've been talking about, and exactly what you're trying to do at the school here. It is right up our alleyway, as far as I'm concerned. I do have to agree with three. I don't know how you can figure it out, but it would make sense to me for everybody to be on the same page.
Yeah.
That's just my thought, and you know better.
And I want to thank you for sending as much information as you did. It's really clear to us exactly what's going to go on there.
So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no? Carried. Then we have the Minnesota State High School League.
So, this is grant B. The board did grant A, I want to say in November. It was in the fall at, at one point. Grant B is used for leadership activities, and so it would be my recommendation to submit this grant application for student leadership activities. This grant would be used to fund leadership activities amongst all of the school districts in the Central Minnesota Athletic Conference.
Several to approve.
Why, why, sorry?
Let's, let's do the motion.
I'll second the motion.
In a second, that's for the discussion. So, I have a motion from Jacob, second from Rick.
Hey, just a quick question. Why does the school board need to approve a grant application? Why?
Because the application requires that the school board minutes in which the board approved it are sent in with the application.
But, okay.
It's the State High School League Foundation. They're the ones who wrote the grant. So, we just get to play by the grant rules, and they say they want the board minutes that the board approved it? I don't know what they just want.
I mean, that's not like every grant, it's, right? I've never heard of a grant that, okay.
This was the exception rather than the rule, is what I would say.
They just want to know that the government bodies behind it.
Okay.
Same thing.
Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no? Carried. Okay? Then we're on the two thousand twenty school board committees.
So, this is my air from the organizational meeting. We got, we got going, and we, we forgot.
To approve?
To approve. So, so I could assure, I could assure you that these are what were represented in that meeting, but I would just feel more comfortable if somebody actually, we had a motion and a second to approve it.
I make a motion, we approve the committee.
Thank you.
I have a motion from Cheryl, a second from Maggie, to approve the school board committees. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no? Carried. And then, we have a review of upcoming meeting schedule.
All right, so your calendars, Thursday, February sixth, meet and confer. That's Ashley and, I emailed somebody, Ashley and Cheryl. I had confirmed, I think, and both of you said that that would work. Three thirty PM, we'll meet in Elementary Conference Room one twenty-nine. I'm hoping to have a finalized agenda for that by Monday, and so as soon as I have that agenda, I will send that out to you. Wednesday, February twelfth, Bruce, the CTE advisory meeting, six PM in the Innovation Center. Thursday, the thirteenth, now remember, this is going to be our work session for February. We will do the school board self-evaluation work on that evening, and then we will also have time for the school board leadership conference. Those will be the two agenda items for that, that evening. And then, Tuesday, February twenty-fifth, that will be the regular business meeting. And just note the start time on that. That's a five PM start rather than six PM. I believe that's a election something.
Yep, I think so.
Evening, it might be townships or some, I can't remember what it is.
I wonder if it's a caucus.
Oh, that's it on Twitter. Isn't that in March?
I don't know. Suzie just went to the election judge stuff, and I know she, it's usually about a month ahead of time. I didn't really ask her what it was about, but.
So, February twenty-fifth is a five PM start, and I do believe that we do have to adjourn by six PM on that meeting. So, just know that that's the tentative plan. As I get closer to that, and I'm looking at the content of that meeting, if we need to modify that start time, I will be in touch with everybody, and, and hopefully, we can figure that out. But the plan right now would be to have an agenda that you guys can get through in sixty minutes.
Okay.
Okay?
I have a question. The CTE, is that an official committee? Okay.
No.
Okay. Then, next item is adjournment.
Of course, the board do now adjourn.
We have a motion from Jacob, a second.
I'll second.
Second from Thomas. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no? Carried.